Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Virtual Study Session of November 2nd, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll and Counsel LeBeere will not be with us this evening?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Gutwijn?
Here.
Bida?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
I am here.
And LeBeere's out. Harrison?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's study session. A lot of information ahead of us tonight and as some were talking before, not always the most interesting subject, but something that is certainly very important to our community, especially moving forward. Would like to throw out the number and you may see it on the screen, the number to call in tonight, there's a public input portion, That webinar ID will be 938-9088-9694. Once you're in, please press pound and then when we get to the open portion, please press star nine to request to speak and then star six to unmute. And so without further ado, we'll get into item three, which is a presentation on new revenue opportunities and sales and use tax code regulations. I'll turn it over to our CFO, Ms. Bjorkland. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Now we're moving on to revenue. We completed the budget and we have an exciting new subject of revenue in talking about sales tax. As you know, this is the first item on our list that we've been discussing with you in terms of things to review for revenue. And this proposal has already been reviewed with the Budget and Audit Board on October 19th. And tonight, the intention is not to get action or a decision, but more of to review what the changes are and answer any questions that you may have, give us feedback and just have an opportunity to have discussion. So Erin Nordman is the one that really has expertise on this and she's the one that's going to be speaking. We also have Greg Graham with us and also Nicole is with us, I'm not sure if she's on, but she's also available to answer questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Erin.
Good evening, Ms. Nordman. Welcome.
And as Erin's coming on, I think she'll be sharing her screen as well this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. And we have a screen share. And do we have Ms. Nordman? We have your screen. Oh, we see you. Now we can't, we can't hear you yet.
Now you can. There you go.
Good to go. Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, hang on just a second. Well, it worked fine with me sharing on two screens a moment ago, so just trying to figure out how to do that. Well, we can go ahead and get started. Thanks for being here tonight. I know this is a really exciting topic for all of you. I heard some of the chatter at the front ends. So we are going to dive right in. So as Holly mentioned, the purpose tonight is to talk a bit about our revenue opportunities. We've discussed some of them in the past. And so we're going to go over that draft timeline for those new opportunities. And then we'll spend the bulk of our time reviewing the proposed sales and use tax code and the regulations and revisions. So here's the timeline that's been shared with you previously, the list of revenue projects. There are seven groupings that we've made here. The first one is where we are going to focus our time tonight. That's the one that's highlighted in the black square. And that is up for adoption this year in 2020. So the first reading will take place in November and then the second reading is taking place in December. The remaining items we can discuss in 2021 and I've identified for you who the key approvers are for those items, whether it's city council or it's a citizen vote. So let's kick this off with these standardized definitions. This project was initiated by a Senate Joint Resolution and it kicked off in May of 2014. So over roughly a two-year period, we worked with other self-collecting home rule municipalities to align on standardized definitions. And the intent was to make it easier for businesses to understand our sales tax codes. Fifty-five of the 72 jurisdictions have adopted the tax code to date. We have chosen not to for a couple of reasons. One is that we needed to do more than just the definition changes or the terminology changes. It wasn't as simple as just replacing words. We wanted to make sure that the content of our tax code corresponded to the definitions. And another reason why we did it was because some of the language was obsolete. We had some grammatical errors. We had inconsistencies. And it was actually very difficult to read if you were a business owner. So we took a more holistic approach and that took some time. And that's why we're here today to present to you what we feel is a quality product. So I've identified for you here the key changes that have occurred within our tax code. The first was that we have proposed to adopt 82 of the 111 definitions. We've been receiving some questions today on why we haven't chosen certain other definitions or why we didn't adopt all 111. And that's primarily because we chose the ones that were most relevant to our community. And we also chose not to adopt some that may cause some confusion. So in some cases, it was just best to incorporate language within the code, within the body of the code versus in the definition. So we came down to 82 of the 111. We also addressed a shift in consumer purchasing and I'm sure that all of you are very familiar with this. The first one that I identified for you is tangible goods. So we often refer to tangible personal property, TPP. So you used to go to the store and you would purchase software on a disk, for example, and you'd bring it to your home and you would put it on your computer and you would install it there. And so that was a purchase of tangible personal property. Well, now that purchasing habit has changed and you can download a lot of that digitally. The same is true for books and music and lots of other things. That once were taxable, when you went to the store, we're just saying it should be taxable in the digital format as well. The second item that I identified for you here on consumer behaviors is the purchasing habits. We used to go to the store to make the purchase and now we can do many things by purchasing online. So we feel that taxation should be the same, whether it's in-store or online. We formatted the tax code for better navigation. So if you are a contractor, you no longer have to go to eight different places in the code to find out how you should be taxing your services or your products. Now we have grouped it, so it's easier to navigate. And then we combined our concepts. So sales and use tax go hand in hand, but previously we handled them separately within our code. So now we have combined the two and I think it flows much easier and that will be better for our businesses to truly understand their responsibility as it relates to taxation. We also provided some industry-specific guidance and I gave you the example of contractors previously. And then the last major area where we see some change is on our enforcement processes. In the past, we did not articulate our audit procedures. And so now we have an entire section devoted to audit so that our taxpayers truly understand what that process is and what their rights are in that process. We've also provided some more detail and clarity on our deficiencies and how we manage those and the taxpayer rights, as I said. What are their rights for disputing an assessment or deficiency? So I'd like to open it up for discussion. As Holly mentioned, this is our opportunity to get in front of you and make you feel comfortable with the changes that we've made with the code. I have Greg Graham on the line, who is our Deputy City Attorney, and Nicole Stare, who is my Audit Supervisor. And the three of us, as well as many people from my team, have worked very closely over the last four years to really dissect every word that goes into the code. And hopefully that shows. We will do our best to answer any of your questions tonight. But do keep in mind that it's been a number of years since we started working on this, so some topics may not be as fresh. And we would be more than happy to go and research those and get back to you if we don't have the answer tonight. Just as a reminder, this presentation will be recorded and posted on Lakewood Speaks. So if you need a refresher prior to first or second reading, you can go back and review that presentation.
All right, Ms. Nordman, thank you very much. And for those who may be watching and would say, "Well, that was a rather short presentation." If you go to Lakewood Speaks, you will be able to see all the addendums and all of the information. And so please go to that site and you'll be able to to see everything that Council has seen. And I do want to thank Council. Also, I saw some questions that came in today, so that's much appreciated. This is unique in that we are home rule and we love to be home rule. But as you can imagine, if you're a small business owner or a business owner, it can be quite challenging when you might be dealing with 150, 200 different municipalities. And so when this first came to fruition, I know the Legislative Committee had some concerns. We wanted to make sure we protected our right as a local community and could kind of determine where we were going with where we wanted to. And so a lot of discussions at the Capitol, a lot of working groups. And Ms. Nordman and her team have been part of that all the way through. So again, this is a lot of years coming together. And for those on the Budget Audit Board as well as the Legislative Committee, you've also seen pieces of this throughout the years as well. So we'll go to questions or comments. I'll start with Ms. Franks. Looks like you are muted.
Sometimes you have to hit the button like three times before it's going to be willing to take that. So I just wanted to really commend staff. I mean, we really got this information very organized with all the attachments, everything built on each other well. It was a ton to read through. I appreciate all the hard work. Obviously did look at it kind of through the eyes of, obviously, since we're writing legislation that lives on past us. Wanted to applaud the fact that I think it's primarily gender neutral. I did see a section in there, poultry men, I think it was cattle men, and probably we want to say operators, but I can propose anything in an amendment, but I just really wanted to acknowledge the sheer amount of hard work that went into this and the time we took to do it well. I actually didn't have, beyond what was provided to us, was so well-educated by what was given to us, I didn't actually have any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo what Counselwoman Franks said. This is a tough task. It's must... I wrote for a living and, boy, I'm sure glad I didn't have to write tax codes. It must have been a very monumental job. I only have a couple of things. One of them is on page four under the agricultural producer definitions. My concern is for farm-to-table urban gardens. And I noticed that casual sale is one of the exemptions. Does that cover local urban gardens? Small operations, although they do make a small profit?
I'm just trying to get to where you are. I'm sorry.
Page four? Bottom of the page, 3.01.230. End of the first paragraph says that casual sales are exempted. Is that our urban garden folks, our urban farms? And CSAs?
Give me just a moment to read it. So you're referring to that definition for agricultural producer?
Yes. At the very end, it says for that person grows or harvests plants or plant products exclusively for that person's own consumption or casual sale. Now, is that just the backyard gardener who's got three or four squash he puts out on the table and leave a quarter for each? Does that include our urban farmers as well? Lots of an acre or so.
So I'll let Nicole chime in if I misstate anything here, but typically with our food, it is not taxable. So if someone is selling it at a home stand or, as you said, an urban gardener, that would not be taxable. If they are selling other items along with it, like gardening gloves or buckets or something like that, those items would be taxable.
Okay, but would they have to register? I recall when we were passing the comp plan, there was talk about having to educate the folks who might have a curbside farm stand about being licensed and reportable.
I believe if they're just selling food, they would not need to be licensed. However, if they're selling tangible personal property, then they would.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And nice job.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else have questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just can't imagine writing a document like this. I've actually never read a tax code before and it was quite an eye-opener for me, in all honesty. I do have a couple of just general questions. The ultimate goal on this is that by having definitions that are across the board with other municipalities makes it simpler for businesses, but also there's an anticipation that we will receive more revenue. And I was just wondering, is there any any idea about how much revenue this will generate for the city once these are in place?
I can't quantify that for you at this point in time. I think we are in a unique position because our code, I would say, has been transformed from what it used to be. And I think a lot of our businesses will find it much easier to understand. So as a result, I think we will gain revenue from compliance. In addition to that, we are addressing economic nexus. So in the past, we required a business to have a physical presence here in the city in order for them to have a taxing liability. By having economic nexus, which came about with the Wayfair ruling, that opens up the door. So as I mentioned, if you have online retailers or out-of-city retailers, they would now have to tax their products as well.
Okay. Just because of the environment that we're in right now and it's changing on a daily basis, really. Is there any data on the number of businesses that have closed in the last six months in Lakewood?
I could get that for you. I don't have it here tonight.
Yeah, could you please? I am really, I'm very concerned about small businesses. Also, in the document, there was mention of tax delinquencies. Do we have any data on how many businesses are struggling and delinquent in their taxes? And first, let me apologize for not getting you these questions ahead. I got so buried in this document that I kind of didn't do my job there. So I really
We'll get back to you on that one as well.
Okay. Also, do we have the number of retailers who have provided non-taxable services? Or providing non-taxable services?
So for that one, that would be our use tax filers and we could get that for you as well.
Okay, thank you. And again, I apologize. I'm putting you on the spot and that was not intended.
That's okay.
Okay. Oh, there was mentioning in there about diplomats and how they basically have immunity from taxation. Does that come up very often in Lakewood? It just never occurred to me that that would be an issue.
It does not come up often.
Okay. Oh, I didn't write down the page, darn it. It was, there was one area that was talking about interstate commerce and talking about the conditions that constitute an unconstitutional tax. I am not familiar with that term and really what it means and how it applies here. Could you please, if you can, clarify or just give back what you find too?
Nicole, are you able to give her more information on that today or would you like for us to get back to her?
Um, I can get back to you, but like overall, Greg might be better in interstate commerce, but there's certain laws that we can't we can't apply sales tax where we're going to interfere with interstate commerce. So we have to make sure that we are aware of those laws also. And that's why that piece is in the code.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Greg, do you have anything you want to add or would you like for us to follow up?
No, I, that's pretty much it. I think the section that Ms. Johnson is talking about is the new 430 subsection B, constitutional preclusion from city sales and use tax. And Nicole's correct, it's primarily interstate commerce. Frankly though, this provision is sort of a it's a sort of a generic statement saying that the city will not tax anything that it's precluded from taxing under federal law, essentially, under under, you know, the federal preclusion. So it, we don't run into this very often. But it's, and it's really more just sort of a general statement than something that we really have to be too concerned about, honestly.
Yeah, because it mentioned unconstitutional tax and that's what kind of made me wonder what it meant. I'd never heard of something put in the context of an unconstitutional tax.
Yeah, and that's that interstate commerce piece.
Okay. And you've mentioned a couple of times that 55 of 77 jurisdictions. Please help me understand that. We've got so many municipalities in our state. Far more than 77. Where did we come up with the number 77?
Those are the self-collecting home rule municipalities?
Okay. Let's see here. And this is kind of something that somebody else asked me about, actually. Do we have a percentage of the gross domestic product? And how many how many taxes we're getting in comparison to them?
Can you restate your question, please?
Sure. What percentage of the gross domestic product are we paying taxes on, basically? You know, when you start to add up federal, state, county, city, metro districts, do we have any idea what the, I believe that this is what the gentleman was trying to get at. Do we have any idea what percentage of the gross domestic product is actually taxed taxation? Maybe I'm not saying it as clearly as I should.
Let us talk about that and get back to you.
Okay. I better understand it better myself, too.
I don't think we have access to that information. Counselor Johnson?
Pardon me?
I don't think we have access to that information. Yeah, within the city of Lakewood, we do, but we don't have to all the taxes.
Okay, okay. You know, on page 20 of the rules and regulations under lodging, it was tax, talking about taxing fees. Could you please talk a little bit about that when you're, when somebody is paying a fee and then you're taxing the fee?
Fees in general in our code are taxable. Not even specific to lodging.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's the only point or the only place that I picked up on that.
But Erin, the fee is you're charging, they're charging somebody else for a fee, and then we're taxing them for that.
Correct, so if there's a fee on their invoice, that fee should be taxable on the invoice.
Right.
Is it pretty standardized throughout the city? In other words, a fee is a fee, and how much is taxed is always the same?
Yes, Nicole, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, so most fees become part of the purchase price, and that's why they become taxable. But they're all taxed at the same tax. So similar to our PIF fee, that's, we have, there are a lot of fees, but it is determined that fees are subject to tax, and that's also on the state level, too.
Okay. Yeah, this was a real learning experience, reading through these documents. On page 10, it says, "In the West," or "In the Event," excuse me, can't read my own handwriting. "In the event that a retailer fails to collect the appropriate sales tax, the CFO may assess the tax due against either the retailer or the purchaser." And I was just kind of curious how often that situation would come up. And frankly, how would the CFO know that this was even out there?
I think that would come up through an audit. Nicole, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that would typically be how we would have visibility.
Okay, and the audits, you're done on businesses on a yearly basis or random or?
It is random and for the most part, and it varies. So our larger retailers often get audited every three years. For smaller retailers, it may be less frequently.
Okay. Actually, like I say, this has been a real eye opener for me, reading this. I am not an accountant. And, you know, I have frequently heard people say and, and believe that they're being taxed to death, which is kind of the, the phrase that oftentimes I think we all hear. And, you know, this, I'm so appreciative that this is going to make things simpler for businesses, because I can see how businesses could naively and without intent not comply with their taxing needs, just based on how confusing and how, how much there is here. So I really very much appreciate that you're simplifying it. You know, it, it's hard for businesses to keep up with this kind of thing. Plus, in all honesty, this creates a bureaucracy to create compliance as well. So that's interesting. Thank you, I appreciate all you've done. I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Gutwin will go to you in a minute, just real quick, too. As these come about, also, please feel free to email, I think, these questions, because, you know, some of those were pretty specific, and they may not have been able to write them down, but much like these budget documents, or I think Ms. Gutwin had a few today, Ms. Vincent had like three or four. We'll probably keep those kind of the same way, so the community can see those questions that were asked as well.
Yeah, my apologies.
Ms. Gutwin?
Thank you. I also just want to echo how clear the, the documents that we've received are. I do think it's going to really help our business community. So many thanks and appreciate the years of work that's gone into this. Just a couple of questions. My, my main question is just about, there's some of the definitions and some of the, well, I guess just some of the definitions that we are looking at clarifying the language. So the city of Lakewood's language would be a little bit different than other cities and other municipalities. And so I just want to understand kind of the pros and cons of doing that, because my concern is that the point is to adopt the same definitions across the board, so it's easy for our businesses. And then even if we're making really small changes, I'm just trying to understand how significant that is, because, you know, sometimes even a comma or an and instead of an or can have huge impacts. So that's kind of my biggest question.
I'll let Greg address that one.
Sure. When, well, unfortunately, I wasn't actually involved in the initial definitions discussions at CML. And it's, as you probably know, it's, it's a lot easier to pick apart someone else's work than to create these kind of things on your own. So when, when I read through these, there, there are inconsistencies in some of the definitions. One example would be automotive vehicles. Automotive vehicles is a definition in, in the standard definitions. And yet, in a few other spots in CML's standard definitions, they use automobiles or vehicle. Well, those terms aren't defined. And in our tax code, in Lakewood's tax code, we use automotive vehicle. So in instances like that, to me, that's a no-brainer. And my view, and I, and I'm, I'm going to sound a little arrogant here, but our review of those definitions helped us make them more like they were intended to be, in my opinion. And so we've actually, and Erin, correct me if, if I misspeak here, but we've actually provided some of, all of our changes, I think, to CML. And CML is, is going to continue to sort of refine the definitions over time. And I believe they'll probably include most of ours, if not all of our suggested changes. As far as the changing the definition, you're, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Gutwin. An and or an or, a comma in the wrong place or in the right place can make a different difference. I actually noticed something this evening where we've, where we missed a comma before we got on. I was just kind of scrolling through and noticed a missing comma. So those, that is something I do, I, I do write this kind of stuff. Unlike Mr. Abel, I know I couldn't do that job. I am not talented enough to write something other than boring, you know, tax codes and ordinances and that kind of thing. But I do a lot of writing, and I'm very particular about how phrases work and how they're offset. And I have arguments with people about the Oxford comma all the time. And people I respect a great deal, who are very good writers. It's, it's unfortunate that they're wrong so often, but I'm just joking. So hopefully, what we've done, and what we believe that we've done, is improved on CML's standard definitions. The substance hasn't changed. Some of the formatting, we changed a little bit, in particular, adding some additional sort of subcategories instead of having long run-on sentences. It's actually something we've done throughout the tax code, is to sort of get these, this information, these concepts into chunks that are somewhat reasonably digestible. And then the final, final thing about some of the changes that we made to the, to the definitions is the terms and the way those terms are used need to be consistent with what's in, in our code already. It was a pretty mammoth undertaking to, to work on this code in the first place, and then to, to take some of these terms that are used in CML's definitions and then apply them throughout our code would have made that task even more difficult. So it was easier for us, you know, to, for example, instead of saying taxing jurisdiction, we say the city. You know, there, I mentioned the automotive vehicles thing. So Erin, I don't know if you want to dovetail onto that as far as what CML is doing with refining the definitions, but that's, that's where we made those changes. And I, I don't think there are any changes that are going to create a substantive difference between how Lakewood taxes and another jurisdiction taxes. That's all in the tax code itself, so.
I think you addressed it well. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I, I guess I just wanted to raise the question, even though I have no doubt that it is more clear the way that you have edited this. Just that, you know, if, just whether that outweighs the benefit of having it be the same, just so that businesses aren't even wondering if it's different, but maybe it's just, it, it sounds like it may not be a real issue. The other question I have is just how our, especially with the economic nexus, how businesses are, how we're going to let people know about this change? They should already know, because it's been the law for, of the land for a while now, but just how will they know?
Nicole, did you want to?
Yes, we're advising, one big player is CML is actually publishing all the cities that are adopting the economic nexus in Marketplace Faciliters Language in their ordinance. And they're also, have a list of everyone who is also going through the SETS system. So that's all published. I think I looked at it as of October 29th. So soon as we have that in place, we'll notify them, and that's where we're having businesses look. And it's a difficult, it's very difficult to get the word out to everybody. I think every business everywhere, when, when Wayfair was, when we got the conclusion for Wayfair, was really wanting to know what's going on. And we told everybody that we haven't got there yet, but you should keep checking back with us. And we're talking about people, not just in Lakewood, where it's easy to have outreach. We're talking about people outside of Lakewood and, you know, basically nationwide. How do you kind of get the word out, except for, I know the state sent out a lot of information, so we'd probably, you know, look at what they did and follow that direction.
And just to clarify, Nicole referred to a SETS system. That is a sales and use tax system that has been created by the state. So that's the centralized portal where businesses can go and do some licensing and, and file their tax returns.
Great, thank you. And last question is just about the delinquent taxes and just, you know, how much of a change are we looking at from what we were doing before? And then same question of how are we going to notice businesses about the changes?
So we tried to mirror our current process that we have in place today. We just clarified it and made it more visible, so that taxpayers would understand. So it's, it's really no difference.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you so much. Very, very thorough, and I guess as tax code goes, it seems pretty easy to read on the scale of tax codes. Thank you very much.
All right, so I have Ms. Harrison, Ms. Springsteen, and then we'll circle back to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just have one quick, quick question. What happens with these definitions that are included in here? What happens if we have a business that comes in that doesn't fit in any of the definitions we have? Do we have a catchall portal or classification that we would have for a business that creates widgets?
Well, if it's a widget and it's tangible personal property, then it's taxable. So our tax code is not specific to a business per se, it's to the product or service that they provide.
Well, I, I didn't see widgets listed here, so that's why I was using that as an example. But I, you know, not knowing what that new business might be, especially with all the clean energy, you know, needs that are coming in, and our airspace that we've got kind of in, in the area, might, we might, there might be things come in that we have not a clue what it could be. So that's what I was worried about. So, and I think you guys deserve the, whatever it is, if it's an ME or a, whatever it is for this writing, holy moly's, this is the John Grisham novel of tax codes, so hats off to you. Thank you.
I think it's a taxi, actually.
And to that point, Ms. Harrison, I mean, that's kind of why we are here, too, right? We learn as we go, as technology changes. You know, as the internet marketplace took hold, we were really getting left out, and so we had to catch up. So I think it's always a progression in, in having these folks that are experts trying to find what's out there and how do we change and, and evolve. All right, Ms. Springsteen, and then Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Yeah, so, so one of my main questions has to do with remedies and 3.01.580. And so as I'm reading through this, and how, how do we enforce how this works in practice? And I, I guess one of the questions that popped to mind is if, if, if it costs more to recover than we would make from the tax, how do we decide whether that's worthwhile to pursue? I mean, I'm seeing things like audits, local hearings, appeals to the district court, that type of thing. And I, I do see a provision for recovering attorney's fees, but I guess I'm just wondering, and also, are you going to treat all businesses the same in terms of large or small? Do we have the budget for that right now or in the future? And I guess I, I'm just wondering my thoughts, and I have a couple more questions, too, but in terms of collection and, and how do you approach, how do you approach the cost-benefit sort of analysis of that?
So we are constantly evaluating the cost-benefit of our collection activities. We do try to be fair for all taxpayers, regardless of size or type of business. And we do provide some flexibility. We are not the heavy hand. In the most cases, we are going in to educate and try to get compliance going forward. That is our intention. Of course, there are assessments looking back, and we do pursue those. It's very rare that a protest will come about. We have had some, and it's very rare that those get escalated up through district courts or beyond. You know, I've been here eight years, and I would say less than 10 have protested and had a formal protest. So it doesn't happen very often. We manage it internally as best as we can, and I work very closely with Nicole and her staff to understand any concerns of the taxpayer, and we try to settle in a place of fairness. So cost, the cost-benefit analysis is always there. We're always thinking of that, and we have a small staff, and we, we do our best with what we have.
And so do you all have some kind of budget for that, for pursuing enforcement?
So if we are managing a basic collective... So if we are managing a basic collection that is handled within my team, that's part of our core responsibilities. If it is a local hearing, in the past I have functioned as a hearing officer. If I have been removed from the audit itself, if I've been involved in the audit or consulted during the audit process, then we hire somebody to be a non-biased third party and provide a ruling. If it goes to the Department of Revenue, we will consult with outside counsel as well as Greg Graham, inside counsel. And then the bills would go to our legal department. Greg, do you want to add any more to that?
Just a couple clarifications. So within the revenue division are a number of auditors and auditing businesses is their job. That's the whole tax collection. So they have a budget for auditing and as, as Erin mentioned earlier, you know, that, you know, some of the bigger taxpayers, tax filers, you know, could be audited every three years. The smaller ones tend to be more random. Nicole and Erin can speak more to that. But that's what the audit, you know, that's Nicole's group. She supervises the auditors. And so the budget is in finances budget for those auditors. I don't know specifically what their budget is for, for hearings, hearing officers and that kind of thing. But under, under state law, any taxpayer, you know, can, can file a protest, whether it's because they believe they should get a refund and we said no, or we did an audit and they think that it's wrong. Any taxpayer can, can ask for, it's called a local hearing and it's an informal hearing. As Erin said, she's often the hearing officer that, for that, if she hasn't been involved in the audit at all. And most of those, most of those hearings, people don't bring attorneys. In fact, we don't usually provide attorneys because the other party doesn't have an attorney. And it's, it tends to be more of an informal discussion about, you know, what is it that you're seeing that we're not seeing? And, and a lot of times I think, you know, especially with the smaller tax filers, you know, that discussion is, is able to be had between members of Nicole's team and including Nicole even, and that the, you know, mom and pop taxpayer themselves. And then they kind of get on the same page. So that's, and that's part of what the auditors do. So in most of those instances, they're not spending any money other than what is already allocated for their auditors in the first place as part of their jobs. Sometimes we do end up, you know, going up, up the chain and those decisions are typically made by, you know, people and, you know, people at a higher pay scale than mine, I'll tell you that, or, or Erin's. And that, and that's how that decision is made, even though it ends up coming out of a legal budget, you know, that's, it's, it's still up to sort of the higher level management to make those decisions.
But those costs are minimal, as you stated, and we do not go to the Department of Revenue or hire very often.
Good to know. Just a couple other questions, and I'll say them both because they're, they're shorter. But one is, there was section 101 under telecommunications service, and I noticed there was a section taken out that kind of defined what telecommunications service is. And I, I mean, I can see in part why, because it mentions pagers and things like that. But I guess I was wondering why that whole section was taken out or not rewritten? And then my other question was just, given this mess we have found ourselves in with COVID, with no apparent end in sight, I guess I'm wondering how, how that factored in? Do any considerations for maybe language to account for such emergencies in the future now that we kind of have more of a, more wisdom about what we might encounter in that regard? So those were my two other questions.
Can you tell me again the section you were referring to for telecommunications?
It was section 101 at the top on page 26, under telecommunications service. I'm not sure what it is in the body of your document.
Okay, we might follow up on that one afterwards. I'm not exactly sure where you're looking unless you know, Nicole.
Yeah, I can do that.
Are you following on that one, Nicole?
I was, I was looking, I know that we did change, I don't know if this was the piece, but remember how we kind of put everything together under access services and telecommunications services? Because the way it used to read was, it was very confusing. I'm not sure if that's the piece you're looking at, but maybe if we had, took some time to compare the two, we can get you a really good answer.
I believe Ms., I believe Ms. Springsteen is, is talking about that definition of telecommunications service. And if you look at the old version, and then, you know, a sentence that's about four and a half, four, about four lines long, to, you know, that, that starts with telecommunications service includes, but it's not limited to. I do think we mashed that, most of that into access service. But there was also a question Ms. Gutlein had asked earlier in the day that the, I think Erin responded about regarding the Internet Tax Freedom Act, that is, that sunset, actually, our ability to tax certain types of telecommunications services. And that happened in June. And so there wasn't really a reason to call that out specifically because we can't tax that any length. So, but yeah, we can get back to you with, with more specific information on that.
And then just the, the, the thing about COVID, I, I don't, I don't know if there's a lot to say about that, but I just wondered how you have considered that going forward with regard to revenues for the city?
So we've definitely evaluated it in terms of revenues. It will have an impact. I think there will be many businesses that fall into delinquency as they struggle. And we've tried to be as fair and lenient as possible. I don't know that I would recommend a change in the code language per se. I would still want businesses to get licensed. I would still want them to collect taxes from their transactions. You know, sales tax is a trust tax, meaning they collect tax from the consumer and they hold it in trust until they remit it to the city. And so that alone should not be a hardship for the business. As it relates to use tax, if they were involved in an audit, for example, and we had an assessment based on tax they should have paid, that is something we would handle through the audit process. Again, we can be flexible on the payment plan and we can discuss how they got to that place. But I don't know that I would want to incorporate any specific language into the code. But if that's something that counsel wants us to consider, we can do so.
I think the way that it's set up now works well because the code is set in terms of what, what the requirements are. But then, as Erin had mentioned, she and Nicole have flexibility in terms of the particular situation of each business to make adjustments as needed to help them with being able to pay their taxes. So having that flexibility outside of the code actually works a lot better because then you can take in individual cases in account versus in a code where you would have to make multiple adjustments and you're not really sure what situations would come up.
All right. Ms. Johnson, your hand is up.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Springsteen, for your question on cost benefit. Actually, I wondered about that as well. And I very much appreciate your compassion working with businesses as we go forward on these delinquent taxes. I am really concerned about small businesses at this point. I know that this seems like such a silly kind of a thing, but it jumped out at, and it was on page 23 in regarding vending machines and talking about if the sales price of the item is more than 16 cents. Are there any vending machine that are actually under 16 cents? That just seemed such a strange way to put that. Could you please comment?
I agree. It is unusual. And we actually had to adjust that. That was from language in the original code. We had to adjust that based on our tax rate since it changed from 2% to 3%. You know, you think about the little machines, maybe with candy in it where you can go and put your, your diamond and you get a chick lit out or something like that. You know, I think there are a few of those around, but otherwise there are very few vending machines with anything less than 16 cents.
Yes, it's been a while since my children have been little, but I have not seen a vending machine that has that price. Also, on the next page, page 25, there was a paragraph here talking about taxation of erroneously paid to another jurisdiction. Could you please just comment on that? How often does that happen and how we're doing there?
I'll let Nicole answer this one. It happens pretty often and it, it comes up on audits on occasion, but I'll let her talk about it. She sees it most often.
We see it mostly in audits. What happens is either the business doesn't understand that taxes due at point of delivery or they believe that we're, that they're selling to a customer in Golden when it's actually Lakewood. So they would collect Golden tax instead of Lakewood tax and remit that to Golden. In those cases, that's not, it was an inappropriate tax that was collected and taxes due to Lakewood and we recommend to the business, well, two things. If they believe that they're paying an incorrect tax, not to pay it. And then also ask their, their vendor to start collecting the correct tax. And then we also address it on the backend where we go to, out to the vendor and kind of give them the education that they need to correct this situation.
Yes, that seems very cumbersome actually for the business and for your department to stay on top of that one.
It is a lot of work.
I can, yes, as I was reading that, I thought, oh my goodness. And you know, this seems like a very silly item, but I just need to have some clarity on, on page 33. And again, I didn't, I apologize for not getting these in sooner. It's talking about entities that you don't tax, government, schools and charitable organizations. It's number one there in the parentheses on the middle of the page. And as it's going on, talking about state of Colorado charitable organizations having a Lakewood certificate of exemption. And then it says schools not held or conducted for private or corporate profit. Does that, it sounds like private schools do not get the same tax exemptions that public schools do? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
No, that's correct.
Is, is that pretty much standard throughout all cities that private schools don't have that same exemption?
It seemed to be pretty common with the group that discuss standardized definitions. So the other home rule jurisdictions that I work with.
Several of these schools are, become tax exempt, not under as a public school, but as a charitable organization for education.
Okay, so then we do have private schools in the city that are basically being taxed and public schools are not?
Most of the private schools are exempt as a charitable, they fall under, instead of a, a public school, they're falling under a charitable organization. So they still have an exempt, exempt certificate through the city, but we just do a little bit more review.
Okay.
Now, now that's not, I'm not saying all of them, but most of the ones that I've, I believe, the bigger one, larger ones, I'm sure they, they do.
And we do a pretty thorough review of tuition, for example, and we look at it as a for-profit and, you know, how do they operate?
Okay. Thank you.
So I do not see any more hands up and I'm going to go to the public input portion. I don't see anybody in the holding area, but if you are, if you want to dial in, 1-669-900-9128, web ID 93890889694. Press pound, then star nine to speak and star six to unmute. Madam Clerk, I'm still not seeing anybody in there. So we'll give it a second in case some of these dialing in. All right, I'll close public input and, Yorke Lynn and her whole team tonight for this great information. I think we'll see you back again mid-November with a final approval ask on December 20th. Is that what I heard this evening? Yeah. Okay. And then I think counsel will continue to have different conversations as far as the revenue piece into 2021 and, and beyond. So thank you all so much, Nicole and Erin. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Graham, thank, okay. So that's all that we have on our agenda. So we'll go to any kind of reports that you might have. I will start in Ward five, work our way down.
Well, we have the exciting topic of review of the budget for Ward five. We're, we're really excited about that. It's not taxes. So we'll go for that and be very happy. So we'd love to have your participation. And then I have a second item that I wanted to bring up, and that is specifically, Counselor Springsteen, I would ask a favor. I support the idea that you have the everybody, every right to be able to talk to anybody about your opinions. But when you go to a news outlet and represent as the city of Lakewood or serving on Lakewood City Council, it makes it sound like all of us believe the same things that you do. You have the right to talk with them, but I would really ask that you would represent yourself as serving on the city council, but not representing our beliefs. I think that's a fair request for all of us. We might have differences of opinions and I think it's fair to say that we serve on the council, but that we are not representing the council's beliefs. Thank you very much.
All right. Ward four. Did I get no's from Ward four? Ms. Springs is smiling.
It was like, gosh, you know.
I was driving hard this way.
Well, I'm here and I wanted to say that this coming Thursday, 6:00 PM, the Housing Policy Commission will be meeting. We will be discussing short-term rentals. We've done a lot of pre-work to this point. We have an elicitation form. We're going to start the deep dive into those discussions to see what the fellow commissioners feel like. And we believe that'll be a two-part meeting, but the first one is this Thursday, 6:00 PM, Zoom. It is posted on the city website, so we certainly hope you can attend. And obviously we are on the eve of our election and just want to, everyone, vote, vote, vote. I mean, at this point, you obviously can't mail anything. You need to drop it off in one of our secure drop boxes and you can register up to, on the day of voting, I believe. So I just want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to have their voice heard. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Ward three?
No comment here.
No comment here.
Um, so I, I wanted to report that I was on Fox 31 with Lori Jane DeGleha and Dr. Clark of the American Society of Anesthesiologists on Saturday, October 30th, regarding the status of the state review on ketamine waivers. Uh, and had discussed our, where we are in the process of scheduling a stakeholders meeting with Representative Harris' office regarding possible legislation regarding ketamine. And we have a good list put together in that regard. I think I'm fairly clear every time I'm on a news program that I am a city councillor, but I'm not appearing on behalf of Lakewood City Council, that these are my opinions. And I, I think that this council has made it clear that not one of you has the guts to stand up with me and say that killing people with ketamine in this city and county is not okay. So I think that's pretty clear that, that you all don't share those beliefs. But along those lines, if, if we're gonna put people in the hot seat about, about expressing beliefs as if it's the belief of the city, there was a recent letter that went out of all the mayors of the Jefferson County cities that basically made a unilateral decision to throw Sheriff Jeff Schrader at the Jefferson County Jail under the bus with regard to jail bed space. Although he has been very limited by both COVID and state law and many budget, budget constraints. And obviously, you know, if there were triage in terms of what kind of arrests we're making in the municipalities, maybe this wouldn't be the situation. But I guess I would ask, why is that okay for the mayor to sign on to a letter without getting the authority of city council or input or approval? Which has basic, which basically appears to extort the sheriff into providing more beds? And, and to throw him under the bus. I, I, I think that's very unfair to Sheriff Schrader. So I, I guess I would ask you, Counselor Harrison, why is that okay for, for one person on our council to express beliefs as if they're all the beliefs of the council? But I can't appear on news programs and try to save lives. I guess that would be my question. I wanted to thank Governor Polis for the letter he sent me regarding my activism surrounding ketamine and Elijah McClain. And, um, I mean, I think it's time really to start thinking about that we should do a study session on the Lakewood Police Department and do a candid assessment of what we're doing, both right and wrong, and anything subjecting us to liability, addressing issues that, you know, are causing protests nationwide. Because if we're, if we have candor and we address it straight on, I think people will appreciate that a lot more and treat the Lakewood Police with respect than if we try to brush things under the rug like we're doing. So, thank you so much.
All right, Ward two?
I was going to address some of the same things that Counselor Harrison did because I had some feedback from some of my constituents about that. But since that's already been stated, I will just say that Ward two is going to have their meeting on November 11th. And if you'd like any topics covered, go ahead and send them to either Council of the Year and/or myself, and we'll be sure to address them. And that's it. Thank you.
Oh, you're the only one here tonight from Ward two. Ward one?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, well, I would like to back up what Ms. Springsteen said about the letter to the sheriff. It doesn't express my sentiments. And I, I think the sheriff is bearing the brunt of being put on the spot by the commissioners, so. And I'll echo what Ms. Frank said. Folks, get out there and vote. Our future depends on it. So whoever you vote for, please just vote. Raimi?
Thank you, Charlie. Well, this Saturday is the Ward one meeting. We'll be convening at 9:30 on a Zoom platform. We will have updates and then also an open mic. And all are welcome and invited to attend. And I would just like to, on the side, say that Walt, my husband, works downtown. And today he took pictures of businesses up and down 16th and 17th that are boarded. Tomorrow, we're going to go and, and close down his business for at least a while. I would just like to ask, however we all seek a higher authority and power and grace, let us reach out for that peace for our community and within our hearts and for healing on Wednesday. Abraham Lincoln said it best, "A house divided cannot stand." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I will address a couple different things. If, if anybody wants to know, there, there's a lot of things in our Policies and Procedures Handbook pertaining to the different roles that we play and when is it appropriate to represent yourself or not represent yourself. So if anybody wants to go there, it's certainly online. Secondly, this discussion about jail has been going on for some time. And it was not signed on behalf of the city council, the city Lakewood. It was signed by the mayors and in conjunction with different things that we've been in conversations with the sheriff about, going back to a commissioner's breakfast, I think, last year. And certainly, he's been very challenged with COVID. And we have a great working relationship with Sheriff Schrader, and I have a lot of respect for Sheriff Schrader. And it's a tough situation between the commissioners and that office. But there's also real consequences to the different cities. And so that's why that letter was written to outline some of the issues that we faced. And all of council received that as well after that was sent. And, and so we will continue to work on that. I need to make it crystal clear that our police, one, do not use ketamine. And two, have nobody has ever been killed in this city by the use of ketamine by West Metro Fire, who are the professionals that administer, administer that. So that is something that comes up every week and it's misrepresented. It's not factual. I'm very proud of the men and women of our Lakewood Police Department. And while not perfect, they serve with great integrity and respect for those that they are trying to service. And I will certainly always echo that. And as well as West Metro Fire. You know, they are our folks who are there day in and day out, dealing with challenging things. And again, never perfect, but I'm very proud of them. And to recklessly say that they kill people in this city and county is, is not a factual statement. And at some point, it needs to be corrected. And so for weeks and months, that has been said, and it's just not the truth. I would encourage anybody that's curious about the use or the protocols to reach out to West Metro Fire. Chief Don Lombardi is happy to talk with you. I know some of our council members have reached out and they've had conversations about their protocol. They have great transparency. They have a civilian board. And in fact, I've recently heard that one of these allegations was dismissed by the governing agency against West Metro Fire. So I want to try to, at least if we're going to have conversation, to start from a factual standpoint. Please get out there and vote. And more importantly, as you saw come out prior to this weekend, the Jefferson County numbers are increasing. And as it relates to COVID. And I know we're all very cognizant, but this is a time for us to try to really do all that we can within our realm and our little worlds to make sure that we keep our economy moving forward, that we keep people safe and healthy. And you may see things continue to change, so please continue to tune, tune into our homepage, which has up-to-date information. All the mayors and city managers had a call late last week and expressed to the county the need to really communicate in an effective manner and in, in a, a easy manner that makes sense to businesses so they know where they fall under the different rules going forward. So with that said, you know, please get out there, vote, be safe, take care of one another. And we will be gone, I think, for a couple of weeks, at least live. We will be back for another meeting internally, I think, November 16th. Mr. Goldstein, do you have anything? All right, Mr. Graham, anything from the attorneys? Madam Clerk? All right, well, thank you all so much and we will adjourn at 8:17 PM. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.